But they're gonna be the first ones to.
All right, we're gonna call the meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Next, we have public comments. Barb, would you like to introduce yourself? Sure, everybody knows you, but.
Good morning, Barrow County Attorney. I'm here on behalf of the elections and I would like to share just a little bit about the public accuracy test. That's gonna be conducted tomorrow.
About the one, I'm sorry.
From the public accuracy test that'll be conducted tomorrow. So Minnesota jurisdictions are required to conduct a public test on their voting equipment. So what that involves is a preliminary test of all the equipment that we will be using. Every piece has been individually tested on a preliminary basis. We are also to instill in the public that the equipment is ready for the purpose, that it is designed, and a public accuracy test will happen at 1:00 PM tomorrow here in the boardroom of the courthouse. And the public is definitely invited and encouraged to take part. This will demonstrate that the equipment is ready to be deployed for next Tuesday's primary here in Meeker County. Thank you.
Any, does anyone have questions?
These are not computers, they are tabulators, correct?
They're tabulators. So what we'll be testing and showing the accuracy on is the tablet, which is a DS two hundred here in Meeker County. It's in all our applications. We also will show the assistive voting device, which assists voters that need to have a help filling out their ballot so they can vote independently like every other person or anyone who chooses to use that method so that it guides them through the process. So we'll be also demonstrating the Omni tablet tomorrow.
Thank you. I'm looking for a motion to approve the August second, two thousand twenty-two board meeting agenda.
I'll move the agenda, Madam Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Schmidt. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we have to approve the consent agenda. Do you wanna go over that first?
I'd be happy to. So included on the consent agenda is two sets of minutes, one from July fourteenth, the other from July nineteenth. Approval of the social services county and hospital accounts payable. Approval to hire full-time assessor technician Tiffany Blair at Level B twenty-one, Step one, nineteen sixty-seven per hour. Effective date to be determined. Approval of the hire of a full-time social worker, Dan- Daniel Smith, Level C forty-one, Step one, twenty-seven, twenty-nine per hour, effective August third. Approval to hire a full-time administrative clerk, Sierra Heaton, Level A twelve, Step one, seventeen thirteen per hour, effective August tenth. Approval to hire a full-time public safety community paramedic, Mike Molitor, C forty-one, Step nine, thirty-four fifty-seven an hour, effective August twenty-ninth. Approval to hire of part-time casual medical director, Jeff Ho, at thirty-five dollars an hour, effective August third. An approval of letter support for the Meeker Cooperative Light and Power Association's border-to-border broadband grant application.
Questions? Why was I the en- I thought the medical director had resigned, but no.
We had, um, we had a contract with HCMC.
Right.
For that position.
Right.
And then the decision that, that you all made was we wanna bring the position in-house, and so this is a casual part-time position.
So, but why do I reckon, I guess I'm ask, I recognize this name.
Because it, it's the same individual.
It is, okay.
However, because we can't have the contract with HCMC anymore.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I, I just have one on the payables, Barb, and I don't may Paul ask you to, but there were some radios in there that were under.
I didn't check that out. I checked the other one out.
There were some radios that are marked for squads, but they're under, they're on a road bridge. That was a.
I got to look at that.
I was just scared. It just didn't fit. Can remind me to ask, I had something from Monana Township too.
Okay.
Otherwise, I'll forget. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I had a question, but I, I emailed Andrew. He got it to Paul Bukovich. I got an answer, and that was on the Workforce Center. Why we were giving them twenty thousand dollars.
Okay.
And Paul sent me back a full explanation that that's just a part of the. That one just caught my eye. I thought, why are we paying for it?
CMGTS one.
Yeah, this is our contractual payment to Central Minnesota Jobs and Train Employment Services, Services for persons that are on Minnesota Families Investment Program and Diversity Workforce Program.
No, I don't remember that. It could've been in the budget, I guess it could've.
Yeah.
That's part of the, yeah, that's what I thought.
It's in Paul's.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, that's the question I had too, cuz I didn't realize that. The other one I had for Barb, Barb too, is we paid Meeker HRA. What, what's that for? Cuz I thought that was appropriations.
This was through, um, this is for their, uh, the conversion, some of the legal fees with that.
Legal fees.
They're gonna reimburse us for it over time.
Oh, gotcha.
So they don't have a lot of cash, so they worked with Andrew to pay the legal fees to get to the conversion that they've been working on for about a year and a half, two years, I think.
Yep.
Hopefully, it's over soon.
Yes, this was the last one, so.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, move to approve the consent agenda.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson, second by Commissioner Shiefer. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Sharon Early, County Treasurer.
Good morning.
Good morning. Um, today I'm here seeking approval to update, um, the investment policy we have.
It was adopted back in June of twenty, or two thousand twenty, and updated in two thousand seven, so it hasn't been updated in a while. And being, we are moving forward with engaging in an active investment strategy for part of the portfolio. I wanted to update it and include some language for that. Um, so I believe you all have a copy in your board packet. And the red items were the ones that were added and some that were scratched out. There's a, one area that I wanted to point out or have discussion with you is on three A, the membership of the investment committee. It states that, that the investment committee shall consist of the county treasurer, two county commissioners, of which one is, is on the hospital board and the county administrator, the county, the hospital administrator, and then the hospital chief financial officer. We haven't been in compliance with that, so I just wanted to get your opinion on if we should strike that and do it the way we are currently doing it, or to keep it in and and have, um, one of the commissioners be on the hospital board.
What was that?
So the, the way that the policy is written is that of the two commissioners who are on the investment committee, one of them is also supposed to be on the hospital board. That's not the way that we've been doing it in practice, so the question is.
Because it didn't always make sense.
Yeah, so do we wanna do that, or do we wanna leave it?
I think it's like, we like to have John Sprader on there, becau- you know, so he's on there, right, or not?
Yeah, this is different though. This is just county policy. They have, he's on the hospital.
Right, so this is unt- okay, so let's go.
This is just for.
That's how it used to be.
Basically aligning the policy to what.
So is this working the way it is?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
I mean, I don't.
I change it.
Why change it?
We're just updating the policy.
I understand, but, but I don't think we've had two county commissioners on that for a long time.
No.
I, I'm the investment committee.
We've had two, but we haven't had one who was a board chair or chair of the hospital board or on the hospital board. So I'm in agreement with that.
Okay, then the rest of the items are, are pretty, um, just straightforward. Under eight, under the investment instruments, they're broken out now, where before it was just by state statute. But instead of having to go back to the statute and look it up, I just included them in the policy. So that's why it looks like there's quite a bit of an addition, but it's just the explanation of that.
And have we ran, has this been gone over by the attorney, or are these auditor changes? Or how did you come up with the change? I'm just curious about the wording, how it was changed.
Um, yeah, I, I had worked with, it has not gone through the attorney's office, um, for the policy itself. Um, I had gone through other investment policies and, and verified these things along with, um, with some brokers and that kinda thing to make sure it tied into what the statute read.
So we don't need to put this through legal, you don't think, Andrew?
Um, it is, I mean, if it's a restatement of what's in statute, I would.
Then it should be fine. Okay. Any other questions? Not, I'd look for a motion.
I'd move to approve, uh, the updated Meeker County investment policy, Madam Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Schmidt. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Breddison. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
Ms. McHale.
Good morning, McHale Johnson, Human Resources Coordinator. Today I have before you the updated Meeker County Employee Recognition Policy for approval. Uh, this process started, uh, when we recognized that there was a statute that would allow us to provide some more funding for some of these recognition type of things. Uh, so this would be a way for us to recognize our employees, which are our most valuable resources. And, um, to be able to do so for their ten- their tenure, their service, and their career contributions. Uh, so the Minnesota statute is fifteen point four six, and it says that a county may establish and operate a program of employee recognition services and that we may use funds for doing so. Uh, so the, the updated policy would formalize some things that we already have in place. So the first one is the annual employee recognition event, so that would be the county picnic that we have each year. It's gonna be coming up soon, August thirty-first, it sounds like. Uh, so that would, uh, just formalize that we'll have that event to recognize employees. Uh, at that event, we would also hand out certificates for, uh, the one-year anniversary of an employee and then five-year increments after that. Uh, the second piece is that this would establish recognition, recognition awards. Uh, so the, uh, like I said, the statute provides that we can utilize some funding for this. Um, so the first year, there would be a, in addition, in all of these, this is in addition to the certificate, um, a county logo pin, and then after that, it would be in five-year increments where we would provide the employee with a online code where they could go online into a catalog and they could select a gift, uh, from the catalog. And it would be a catalog of the different levels listed in your packet there. Um, the employee would have to be in active status, and it would be presented to them the month following their anniversary date. Uh, and if anyone wants, I have a hard copy of what a sample catalog looks like. There was a few pages of this catalog included in the board packet, so I don't know if anyone wants to see that, but I have this. We did look at two different companies. Uh, the one that we are proposing is the one that is the lower cost of the two. Uh, so each, each year has different levels and different values of the catalog. Uh, the nice thing is, is that the cost includes everything. It includes the shipping of the item. It includes providing the code to the employee, um, the item itself. And then if, for whatever reason, the employee's not satisfied when they get the item, they are able to return it. And that company actually pays for the return shipping as well. They can also, uh, track all of this for us, so for auditing purposes, we'll be able to track, um, what code went to who, whether they used it or not, and if they end up not use, using it for some sort of reason, we can close that code, uh, for a four-dollar fee. Uh, then the next piece of this is the recognition of retirement piece. So currently, we have been doing, um, some retirement celebrations. Uh, but there wasn't funding provided for that, so there was cake and cook, and coffee and things like that, uh, provided by usually the, the people in the department paid out of pocket. So this would be providing some funding for some light refreshments, cake, things like that, um, for retirements. And that would just be for retirements. It can't be that someone would be leaving for other purposes. It's only for retirements. Then, number four, recognition events. So this just says that we'll, we'll be able to do other recognition events as needed. So if we wanna recognize maybe a certain department, if they've had, you know, in the past, we've had where highways had really heavy snow years, and then we've been able to do like a pizza party for them or things like that, just to be able to, to say thank you and recognize their hard work. Uh, the last one is the recognition of a sympathy memorial. Uh, so currently, we have a funeral fund. It is fully funded by employees at this time, so this would provide funding from the county. Um, so it would be up to a hundred dollars, uh, if a employee or elected official passes away. Uh, and then seventy-five dollars if they have a relative, and we have it listed in there, um, if they have a relative that passes. And currently, the county already has, uh, funds in the budget to be utilized for this purpose. So it would just be looking at also continuing to include that in the budget going forward.
All right, questions? I'm a qu- is seventy-five dollars enough for light refreshments for, in today's world?
And Cory looked into it. So Cory is, we have a couple people, we formed an employee recognition.
Right.
Committee, and so Cory did look into some of those costs.
Yeah, the, a cake would run roughly fifty dollars, um, or slightly over, and so we thought seventy-five. Yeah, seventy-five would be sufficient.
Um, and does this mean we will no longer be handing out those lovely paper years of recognition service? Cuz.
We will still provide those. However, this will be in addition.
I was wondering if we could, I was wondering if we could get a cheap black frame to put there.
I'm sure we can find it.
Normally, when I give a five, when, when I do up the five-year, I do that folder. Yeah, I know.
I just think, you know.
The, the, the question I have relates to E, um, where the county, uh, on the recognition of sympathy. You know, when the employees do it, it might have a different meaning, you know, what I'm saying? This didn't come from the county, it came from my fellow workers.
I think it still is that way, isn't it?
No, you would fund it now through the county.
Sure, but, but it would be from the county and the county employees. I've always thought it's probably not right to expect, but.
So, so Cory, can you talk about how the funeral fund works right now?
So normally, when the, when the fund falls below eighty dollars, I put out an APB and ask people to donate. And so, um, um, it's not a requirement. People just do it voluntarily. And we get, hmm, not quite half of the county employees who, who actually contribute. Um, I always kind of feel like I'm, like I'm begging for money. Sometimes I have to put out a reminder and another reminder, and, and so I always kind of feel like I'm begging for money. And, and there are many who don't, but many who do. Um, when there is a funeral, I order flowers, and all I put on the card is deepest sympathies from Meeker County employees. That's always what I put on the card. I send out the email to notify people. Um, and so that wouldn't be any different in this case. It would still.
And I'm guessing it's the same people that replenish every time.
Yes, it is. And some are very generous and, you know, give more than the five-dollar minimum that we ask.
Well, and there's nothing in here that your fellow employees can't do something for you to over and above.
This is true. This is true.
Basically, it's similar to what you just did with, uh, Sharon. It's matching the county to the policy that we're already doing in bits and pieces. It's putting them all in.
What we're not seeing is that kind of like ground swell of employees coming together and saying, no, let's, let's donate. It's, it is kind of a little bit more of that impersonal.
Yeah.
It's coming from a fund provided by employees, so.
And I'm gonna guess if it's someone close to you, you're gonna do other things on your.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Any other questions? Can I, do we have a motion or no?
We do not have a motion.
Has some moved to approve the updated employee recognition policy as presented?
Motion by Commissioner Breddison. Do I hear a second?
All second, Madam Chair.
Second by.
Thank you to Cory for always.
Yes, Cory, thank you for always taking.
Well, it was a, it was a, definitely a committee effort. I didn't do a whole lot, so.
Um, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, McHale.
And I just wanna recognize some of the people that are on the committee are Cory, myself, Sue's in Highway, Kada in the treasurer's office, Julie in the, in the sheriff's office, and then, um, John Fitzgerald in the attorney's office.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Where are we here? Andrew?
Yes, we're to me. Forgot to slide. Uh, before you is, um, continued discussion regarding proposed resolution twenty-two, twenty-seven for the conveyance of four fifteen South Ramsey Avenue. Uh, as you recall, this was an item that we previously discussed on July fifth. And at the time, it was continued to a regular, uh, to this regular meeting. And, uh, we do have a motion on the table for approval of this item.
So we have a motion on the table. I'm gonna take a little bit more discussion, but not much, because I think we've all kind of discussed. So does anybody wanna discuss this any further? Julie?
I have, I have, I have an entire list of reasons why I will be voting no.
Okay.
On this resolution today. Um, the first one is that it's a resolution. And a resolution has more teeth to it compared to a regular motion. And, um, a resolution requires four yes votes versus a regular motion, which only requires three yes votes. Um, because it's a resolution, I, I don't want it to set a precedence that there is a potential for subcommittees feeling they have more power than what needs to come before this commissioner board. Um, back in two thousand nine, the property was purchased for a hundred and forty thousand. It is owned by Meeker County residents. I don't know why they paid a hundred and forty thousand back then. But this week, I called a local realtor, and she gave me information as to what this property could potentially be worth today in this market. She gave me a comparable for a lot in Litchfield, which just sold this year for twenty thousand. And if we were to multiply that times the five or six lots that could be surveyed off of this piece of property, that's a hundred to a hundred and twenty thousand. If the property is sold, the money could go back into the hospital for equipment, remodeling updates, whatever they wanted, um, instead of being given away. And we just discussed in our agenda, the investing of money and how the county tries to capture funds and capture higher interest rates, try to use taxpayer dollars in profitable ways, not to give away assets. I, I can't get beyond the giveaway. I don't feel that it's necessary for Meeker County to give Ucap property to build low-income housing. Eden Valley did not give money to the project up there, did they, Steve?
Uh, not that I'm aware of.
Ucap purchased their properties up there. I, 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 Ucap could then purchase the lots if we were to sell them, but not to give the property away. The reasons mentioned from last session about, um, giving the property away so that it comes back on the tax rolls is a moot reason, because whether we give it away or we sell it, it will come back on to the tax rolls. I, I have just a number of other reasons why I am voting no on this today, which I'd be willing to discuss. But that's kind of my initial response in a nutshell.
Okay. Any other discussion?
If I can just provide two quick clarifications.
Okay.
On that, um, first, th- there's a comment made about resolutions require a four-person vote. Typically, no. Typically, a resolution does require a simple majority. This one is unique because of a specific statutory requirement.
Right.
Second, the proposed resolution doesn't provide any other organizations, the, any other agencies, anyone with additional authority or powers beyond what they currently have.
Okay. Anybody else?
Um, one thing, I, when she said there's potentially five to six lots, Ucap's planning on putting on three, right?
Three first.
Three first.
But if they have the additional two lots, then they'll apply for another grant when they get the three done.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
So what is the likelihood of that occurring? Is it hard to pinpoint? I mean, if they get the three up, will, will it be like, you know, a pretty good shot that they have the potential to put more up, or?
That's a tough question, Danny, cuz I don't know what the state does. But I keep looking at what they did down in Marshall, and they were able to get seventeen total homes built down there so far.
And that's where Marshall, the city of Marshall, gave them the lots?
They donated all but four thousand dollars of the lot to them, yes. Then they went together with some, um, of the larger businesses and that, and formed a grant that they gave them or worked out with these businesses. So, um, some of those felt that that was a good investment. And then that money went to help defray the cost of the build.
Okay.
People who apply for these homes, once they're built, have to meet an income level requirement?
Before they can write a purchase agreement on it, they have to fill out a three-page application, submit three years' worth of tax returns, current pay stubs, and then Tiffany at Ucap, who is their housing person, has to, they have to meet the criteria. And if they do, then she will give them permission to write a purchase agreement.
And I'm not, I wouldn't probably refer to these as low income.
No, they're not low income.
I, I would guess they're affordable. I would call it affordable.
They're income-based, so you can't make over a certain amount of money to purchase those.
But you probably can't buy it if you're on the low end of the scale either, because you're not gonna get the.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
Uh, just the, just the comment on the, the Eden Valley project versus the Litchfield. And actually, from my understanding, Ucap and Paul, you can clarify here, if I have this misstated. But, um, the, the entire Meeker County project is one project. And basically, the, the hospital, and this is just my understanding, not, not first-hand information. Um, saw an opportunity here because of the, the housing market, the, um, the construction costs that went through the roof. This project was, you know, trying to get underway shortly before COVID and ran into COVID and then the, the costs and everything. So, uh, my understanding is that the hospital looked at this as an opportunity to make these projects go because the, uh, the overall cost of the five homes, it's, it's a, it's a five-home project. It's not a three-home project, and the lots in Eden Valley are purchased just through private ownership. You know, there wasn't an opportunity in Eden Valley to give them. The city doesn't have lots that they can give them, you know. So the opportunity wasn't there in, in Eden Valley where this opportunity arose, um, for the hospital to, to donate the land, um, to the EDA, which will just be the, the, um, basically the holder of the asset for a short time. Um, and, uh, and, uh, then Ucap will continue on with the, the entire project, so.
And the EDA was unanimous on their dis- they're, they're excited about this project?
If I remember right.
But in terms of the EDA, our approach, we were just saying, yes, we will.
We're facilitators.
We'll be facilitated a hundred percent, cuz I think that's the right role for us.
Yeah.
And if this project, let's say, Ucap doesn't move forward within a year, everything just rolls all the way back. Hospital ends up, or with that property again. So we know if they get the property, something's going to happen. Versus, you know, it's a maybe out there in the future. This would be a, a move, so.
So the process would be, the county would give this one acre for five or six lots to the Economic Development Authority, which in the resolution says desires to own this real estate property. Then it is a gentleman's agreement that the property would be given to Ucap. And then Ucap would build these three homes, and then those three homes would be sold to private parties.
I don't know about the gentleman's agreement. That's within the EDA rules, so.
They're do- they're taking, they're, they're taking the property over to give it. What's the word I'm looking for here?
It says that they desire to own it, and what happens to it is not conveyed in this resolution.
They're accepting responsibility for the endeavor, so it'll be in EDA's possession and then give it to Ucap. And if something doesn't happen in a year, I'm assuming, Paul, you're saying all bets are off and it goes back to the way it was.
Well, Ucap will lose their funding.
Right.
On the project.
So they have to.
Yep.
Prover it back.
All right, any other questions? I'd like to.
And I, I was on the fence because, uh, what, everything Julie said, I can't argue with in terms of anything, in terms of what she said, but there is one aspect that I was always looking. But there is one aspect that I was always looking at and that's why I was on the fence, is that I, if I were on the hospital board, I probably would not have approved this because I, it just goes against, you know, you usually don't give up an asset. And I'm not sh- understanding why they purchased it in the first place. But it's been sitting there for thirteen years. And I can understand if it was sitting in the books and it's not doing anything, you know, at least they're trying to move to get some houses on it. And this will guarantee three houses being put up. And um, that, and, and my other part of me, in terms of why I'm probably gonna vote yes this time, is because of the fact that it was used by hospital funds to initially buy this. It was uh, usually, most of the hospital funds are, are conducted through the hospital board. And it was unanimously on the hospital board. I feel like we do have the authority, but I feel like it's more of a formality in terms of this situation. And if that's the wishes of the hospital board, I have a hard time just saying no because of that. But I personally, if I was on the hospital board, I probably wouldn't have voted yes for this because of, it's the way I look at it. You know, in terms of if you have an asset, you know, unless there's a real reason to give it away, I'm not sure why they purchased it. And I'd also, if I was on the hospital board, look at other assets too and say, is there something else in the books that we shouldn't be holding? And have maybe some other methods of moving them? But so that's, I, like I said, everything you said, I cannot argue with that from the way I look at it. The only way, reason why I'm voting yes is because it was made, purchased by hospital funds. And the hospital board approved that purchase. Now they're approving, giving it away. And it, it will actually put out three houses, which I know there's a lot of lots in Litchfield now that are vacant. And at least maybe that'll help get some momentum going for further development.
So.
Maybe it's a good example to see that it can be done. Not, and like I said, I just, this particular thing, I had to really think about it. And I wanted to not just, once I knew it was a four to one, had to be four to one, I wasn't gonna just, you know, I wanted to really think through it. So everything you said, I cannot argue, but that's the reason why I'm gonna vote yes today.
So, so I, I'm gonna expla- I don't, I was, this property, it was purchased before I was a commissioner. But I think the previous administration were purchasing a lot of property, not knowing which way, direction the hospital was big going. And I think now they've decided what they need and what they don't. And so I think those assets are being looked at. And Paul came to the board with this idea. And I think everybody knows there's such a need for housing. And I don't think there's cooperation coming in areas there, where there could be. And the hospital is also very interested in getting some housing for employees. So, so that's my explanation for that. So with that, I would call for the question. Corey?
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bredesen?
No.
Commissioner Shifelbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Ober?
Yes. Hey, thank you. And thanks for all your thoughtfulness on that. Next, we will do uh, administrators report. You're up.
Thank you. The only thing I have today is that uh, the work on the fifth floor storm restoration is nearly complete. Remaining item is replacing some of the ceiling tiles. Courts are currently working on setting up courtroom number two and getting it back uh, to full operation shortly. Work has gone very well, uh, and that's especially thanks to the work of, of Joel and the rest of the facilities team. You know, first off, immediately during the, the aftermath of the storm, uh, but then their vigilant work to make sure that our contractors are working hard and getting the restoration complete, so.
So.
Did see any payables. There was some carpet. Was that because that got ruined in the?
W- we had some additional carpeting that we were taking care of at the same time while they were.
So is the insurance picking up a lot of that?
Yes, there.
Do we have, how does that work? Do we have a big deductible or?
Corey, do you know what our deductible would be on this?
I, I believe it's, I'm never quite sure if it's five hundred or a thousand dollars. But it's not more than a thousand dollars.
So now there are things in place so this doesn't happen again?
Well, the roof has been repaired.
Okay.
The roof requires replacement.
The whole roof?
The whole roof is in the CIP.
So that is on our capital project?
It's in the capital plan for next year, yeah.
So cost of that?
Very expensive.
Hundred and fifty.
Nine hundred and fifty thousand.
Nine hundred and fifty thousand.
But that gives us a what, thirty-year guarantee or?
Yeah, I believe it's a thirty-year warranty on the roof and, but we would expect about forty years.
Wow.
It just gonna come.
Is that a membrane roof?
Boy.
Yes.
It just gonna come at a less favorable time on the budget, I can tell you that.
One question I did have from the, you know, from the, the payables. I did notice that they are painting something in the LEC. Are they, I mean, is some of that gonna be, you know, redone? I mean, are, are we, are, are, do they, all the department
Good question.
Understand that this is gonna happen and that we should probably do minimal maintenance?
I would have to see exactly the area that was being painted.
Somewhere in the LEC, I noticed a painting that's like another thousand bucks or whatever cuz paint's not cheap. It's a small amount, but I was assuming that all the departments are kinda going forward in terms of understanding that.
That paint was in the jail.
Okay.
You know, as you know, we're not doing major renovation in the jail.
I didn't know exactly where. But nobody is doing any legitimate point. They're not because of the project that's coming up.
Yeah, yeah. The, the specific thing, you know, it, it says it's in the jail and then, um, so, yeah.
Okay.
All right. Is that all you have, Andrew?
That's all I have.
We'll move on to the Board of Commissioners report. Who wants to begin? Raise your hand right up here. It's long and hard choice.
I can go ahead.
Okay.
We'll start on this. Um, CPT, uh, nice cash balance here. Two million, one hundred and forty-two thousand dollars in the checking account.
Can I borrow?
Everybody's trying to borrow all the time.
Um, I got, had a chance to meet our new director, um, and of course, we borrowed him.
Let's not talk about that. You borrowed him too.
So as I was um, visiting with him, I knew he was from Hancock. I asked him if he knew my brother-in-law and, and sister. And uh, he said, yeah, well, he says, I was in your nephew's wedding. Oh, really? That was forty years ago. How was I gonna?
So we will get to borrow something.
Never borrow for family. Or acquaintance.
They are looking at purchasing the building that they're in. The price is probably about right. It'll take it off the tax rolls in that county though because it, we're a joint powers board, so it will no longer. But um, we're getting much closer on that and we certainly can afford to pay that. The lease we're paying right now, if we continued with the same lease, um, we'd pay two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in ten years. So we may as well own it.
Who takes care of the maintenance though? How old is the building?
The building was a nineteen ninety-five construction. Um, we are having a roof, before we make a, a purchase offer, we're having it um, evaluated by a building inspector. We wanna make sure that the roof is good because of the electronics inside. We got a good foundation. If you got a good roof and a good foundation, most everything in between can be fixed. The real issue is if we don't buy it, let's just say we don't, we are currently leasing one half of the building. The bathrooms are on the other half. So if they were to lease out the other half to someone else, potentially, we wouldn't have bathrooms anymore. So we thought, you know what, let's just.
So then you're gonna move to the other half and lease out the half without the bath?
It's really beneficial to them. Really beneficial.
Possibility.
It's um, then the last thing, um, because of our new director and, and Joel Flattton seems to be pretty nice. Well-respected individual and he's already uh, got um, I think some of them employees respect that he's coming in. I have proposed changing uh, our meetings to every other month. That trip down to Morris, we have a gentleman that drives three and a half hours, one way to get there.
Don't you have a Zoom option?
Yeah, but they don't.
It's not great.
Huh?
It's not great.
No.
So CP.
Listen, they're in technology. Let's talk about this.
You don't have a good Zoom.
It's.
That's kinda, that's kinda scary.
You got a big room. You got people moving around in the room and talking and you're trying to run over to that person with the microphone so that they can hear.
Might be cheaper to sit.
Why don't you just set it up better?
It's just not conducive. Good. Um, so then Pro Works, um, they've kinda had a couple of unfortunate things, but they also had a couple of good things. They received eighty-six thousand dollars in employee retention credit. And then they received another fifty-five thousand in, for a different quarter, uh, for retention credits. And they used that money um, to pay off the COVID loan that they had for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we also paid off all of our vehicles. So we got rid of some interest. And e- even though it was low interest on the COVID loan, the vehicles were probably three, four percent, but we got rid of the interest. We stopped that. So um, then they had a little bit of um, now ADA, that we're not ADA compliant on doors and on some ramps. So um, the doors alone were almost ten thousand dollars and we don't know what to submit. But um, so we're gonna have to do some fixing there to become compliant because most of their clients that come in there need the ability to get in and out. So um, that's something we're working on. And just, this is just for a point of information, the thrift store in Dassel um, has an average monthly sales of eleven thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. The store here in Litchfield um, has ten thousand, five hundred in sales.
How much did Dassel have?
There's the one on the corner and then there's another one next to the barber shop or down by the barber shop.
How much did you just say Dassel had?
Eleven, seven seventy-five per month in sales. And that's all donated goods that are repurposed, so that's a pretty good deal. Then I went to Prime Health for uh, Andrew and Beth, as neither of them could go. That was interesting. The average change um, for most of the counties was about three point six percent increase in their insurance. But um, Jim, Jim Prisbilla was sitting there and I believe their change was ten point five, wasn't it? So Prime Health, Prime West, the employees are gonna get a ten point five hit. And all the rest of the counties are getting a three six. But they did not have a good year last year. I mean, they had a lot of claims and so that's what it's based on. The part of that change though is there is a change in the federally mandated amount of HSA an employee must contribute. So there are, some of that change, that three point six, does involve that federally mandated increase in HSA money, so. Um, they had a, a long discussion about wellness benefit. There's a low percentage uh, of people who use it. But they really don't have that greater benefit. I mean, it's the gyms and things like that. Well, the folks that use a gym are gonna probably use a gym anyway. But um, so they were talking with um, about possible ideas. One was to use the incentive, if you do the wellness plan, to lower your premium. But you know, these are just things they're throwing around right now. Nothing concrete. And then one last thing, I don't, you know, Preferred One used to take care of all the administration of their insurance. They had been bought by um, United Health. So they will no longer have Preferred One doing it. It's United Health. And United Health is huge. And that's, that's a big company, so. And then, I think, uh, other than, I'll let, Beth will probably talk a little bit about the rates that they, they gave to us for um, Meeker. Just to give you a rough idea where we went on ours based on that. So that's all I had. And a nice, um, July didn't have that much. A lot less meetings.
Julie, you want to go next, my dear?
No, we had our regular meetings on the fifth and the nineteenth. On the fourteenth, Beth and I were at the Meeker McLeod Sibley Public Health Meeting in Hutchinson. They addressed the fiscal expenses, financial grant reports for the months of March and June. We heard a nice presentation from the WIC peer leader. She was asking to hire another person for the three-county team and that request was approved. Kaiza Olson, the health board administrator, she gave her report. And she is preparing the next budget. She's expecting around a ten percent increase in contract and benefit expenses. Yikes. Um, things are pretty much returning to pre-COVID status in their various programs. And then Kaiza extended a very nice compliment to our Patty Hersberg. Patty is the HR technician. She works uh, with Macau and Corey downstairs. Kaiza thanked Patty for her work in helping with the hiring process of the various positions. Kaiza said Patty has been amazing to work with. And I thought that was really nice of Kaiza to share that compliment with the entire committee about our Patty. And so I called Patty and I told her of this recognition. I think it's important for people to hear compliments. And Patty was so appreciative. So that was our meeting on the fourteenth. Then at one o'clock on the fourteenth, county commissioners, we met here to discuss our social services health plan provider. Then on the nineteenth, um, before that regular county commissioner meeting, Paul and I had a personnel meeting in the courthouse. We had that one. Then we had our regular meeting. Then the next day, on the twentieth of July, we had our regular local public health meeting. It's held in the social services building. Our new doctor, Whitney Rents, Rents, I believe is how it's pronounced. She was not able to attend, sh- so I chaired the meeting. But she is a new doctor here at the hospital and she will be taking Dr. Searle's uh, place. And she will then chair this local committee. We also welcome Sue Stike, who will be a new member of the committee. And she was a, is a retired RN from the Dassel area. And then, let's see. Today, we have our regular meeting. Tonight, we have a five-thirty ditch meeting in Dassel at the historical building. Tomorrow, Paul and I will have an AIS meeting. And I think we should recognize that we have a couple of radio personalities seated, seated among us this morning. Beth and Andrew were interviewed on KLFD Radio uh, about information for the remodel project. They did a wonderful job.
Thank you, Julie.
Interview. Tim was just here. Tim Bergstrom um, is from KLFD Radio. He conducted their interview and he covers our meetings as well. So Tim was just here. But yeah, I, I listened to that and it was well done. And we should all have received letters from the county extension office inviting us to attend now the Meeker County Fair, which entry day is tomorrow.
Coming up quick.
Yep, and it runs three, four, five, six, seven are the dates.
Anniversary, so they've got a lot of things going on out there.
The hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the county fair.
Neil McCoy?
Yeah.
Did John Carlson ever get something together that we were going to do or not?
Yes, I'll talk with the folks who are involved with that right after this.
Okay, thank you, Julie. Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Uh, July was basically budget, budget, budget.
Your report is easy, though.
And other budgets. But I did have a, a couple things. Uh, Vets Council, uh, had that on the twenty-first. They're working on getting a, a new van and that, like anything else, is gonna be a slow process the way it looks. And they discussed maybe um, doing a van wrap, get a little more uh, notice on the street when they're out and about. But they do, um, well, I had it written down, I think around two hundred and fifty rides a year. So they do offer a lot of, a lot of rides um, to Saint Cloud and to the VA and the cities. The other thing we did discuss, uh, they were, the council itself was wanting to put um, the new VSO, Tim Steiner, on the checkbook. And I just, I, I had a conversation with them that um, to be aware, I just, I'm not telling you what to do, but just be aware that if a county employee is on a checkbook, that checkbook becomes part of the audit process that the entire county goes through. So they do a great job with what they do over there. And they do, you know, very good job in-house. And I said, I think both the county would rather you went that way. And, and I think for your benefit, it'd be good if you keep it in-house. And, and so that was one of the discussions going forward, just uh, cuz they do do a good job, provide a great service to the additional service with beyond the yellow ribbon to the area veterans too. So we had that discussion. Other than that, we're still working on budget. We're um, at the county. We got one more this morning here to go through. Um, expenses are, are up, like every, you know, you're seeing them in all your board. Expenses are, are up like every, you know, you're seeing them in all your boards, so it, it translates the same across, across the county. Um, and then across our, uh, uh, joint powers boards and whatnot, um. Emergency Services Board budget did, uh, for Meeker County's portion did, for Central Minnesota did drop slightly. I mean, a few hundred dollars year in, year out, so that was another budget that we went through. Um, and that, and I had Grove City Care meeting. And they're gonna have, uh, they had to postpone their summer picnic, um, because they had some COVID going through the facility at the time. Um, so they're gonna have that here later in August. And I think that their windmill days in Grove City is for the twenty-first as well and, yeah, other than that, I'll be out at the fair quite a bit this week with the corn growers and stuff, so. It does sound like they, they're pretty excited. They got a lot going on there, so, that's all I got.
Yeah, we had a lot of budgets, like Steve said, it's not looking pretty at the moment, but we'll still keep working on that. We also had, uh, uh, a negotiations meeting with Christie, just going over language and stuff before we start negotiating.
When do you start those?
We're working on schedule.
Okay.
And then, uh, we had a Woodlands, uh, meeting, which I was part of the agenda and I will let Commissioner Oberg do the, uh, Woodlands update and I'll just fill in the blanks.
On your negotiation, do you tackle them all at one time? So you just kinda?
Our pre-game was mostly talking about language.
Yeah.
So, uh, cause we pretty much talked about what we're gonna talk about. The big stuff together.
Uh, yeah, we, we discussed big picture stuff with all of you. There's a lot of other minor language changes that we had tried to get two years ago that we're gonna potentially pursue again. There's other little stuff that we've discussed with departments, things that are, are not really necessary for all of you.
So, and this is just general, um, but are they similar enough? I mean, you're doing what, five, five negotiations?
Eight.
Eight? I mean, you know, it doesn't, the minutia doesn't get into your head and do you start talking about one with one group and you, you got the whole wrong group or?
We'll see. No, it'll be okay.
I just, I just thought that might get a little confusing.
Sounds like you're volunteering your services.
No, 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 no.
Anything else?
That's all I had.
Okay, so I had a woodland meeting for strategic planning. Um, we just, they went over some general things they asked. I just zoomed in, they asked me to sit on it. They talked about, because I'm chair, future direction, um, gaining excellence. My thing was access to care, that's what I kept stressing, which they all agreed, so that was just a general. Um, they're looking for better staff retention and, uh, they, I ta- I mentioned a closer outlook at, uh, looking closer at, uh, outcomes. Then I had a Supporting Hands meeting, um. First of all, I had a personnel meeting to discuss how we're gonna hire a new administrator, um, since he's moving on to CPT, which is disappointing for a lot of us, however, you're getting a good guy and I think he'll be your answer. So we formed a committee to, um, do interviews. I think they were gonna post, post, post it yesterday or today. Ranville County is gonna step in and take care of things in the interim. So we did a con- we also had a regular meeting in Olivia yesterday for Supporting Hands. And, um, we approved a contract with them. Um, the committee is gonna be, uh, Diane and I and, uh, Liz from, uh, another health board, I can't remember which one, Southwest or, yeah. And then the chairman, Rick, I think, and, uh, maybe Dave. Um, and then as I said, I had, I had woodland, but I don't have my notes on it here, Danny. And I didn't do that on purpose, so I'm gonna bring it up here, unless you wanna go ahead.
Oh, mine's all entered in my mind.
I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go over what I read.
Forgot one minute of that meeting, but I'm not gonna get it recorded.
One thing I'm- I can't believe I don't have my notes, but I don't. So, they did say that they're gonna do a one percent increase, um, to everybody's budget. And I asked her to write a letter of explanation because, um, the CCBHC was supposedly gonna help, well, will help with the money that's coming in, however, it hasn't been going constant, consistently long enough, so. And I guess one percent isn't a huge amount of money, um, for what's going on today, so. Um, do you have anything you want, cause I really don't have my notes with, it's been a while. Okay, we're just gonna move on.
Hey, exactly. Nothing pertinent to Meeker, I guess, right?
Okay, what was there, do you think? Besides?
Besides me?
No, besides you.
Yeah.
Um, then we had a Meeker County, uh, shelter fundraising meeting and we're gonna do, uh, bowling again, probably in October to raise money. Um, and then we're gonna do a French toast breakfast. Um, and we're gonna try free will donation this year, so see how that goes and Corey works hard on that, so thank you for that, Corey.
Where's the, where's the breakfast at?
The breakfast, I was gonna, is, the Legion has given permission us, for us to use that. And, um, hopefully you can help again.
When is it? Do you know when it is?
Oh, I'm sorry, October twenty-third.
Twenty se- second. Twenty-second is the bowling, twenty-third is the French toast breakfast.
Is that a Sunday?
It is.
It's a Sunday morning.
Eight to eleven-thirty.
Eleven-thirty. And Julie reported on the, um, CHB, I don't think I have anything else there. Um, the hospital is working on the same thing as everyone else, trying to reach out and get a pay scale in place that's gonna help, uh, get more provide, get more, uh, staff, cause we're using a lot of travelers still. Um, so they're working on a bonus thing and some things that are gonna come before the, they're gonna come before the finance committee, I think, this week. Also at the shelter, they're having a Jordan's Way fundraiser where he comes in and you ask, I might call you Julie and say, you know, for twenty bucks, if you don't win twenty bucks, I'll take a pie and, you know, whatever, things like that. Where they try to wait, raise a bunch of money, so. They did it, I think, was it last year, Corey?
It did, yeah.
And raised quite a bit.
So you won't be on the chair getting a pie thrown at you?
No, I probably won't. Another big sup-
You know, huh?
Now, maybe I will.
That'd be a bad idea.
I better, uh, I better stop.
Holy moly.
Lot of things, a lot of things.
This could be a big deal. Um-
Go to Cold Spring Bakery and load up again.
So, also at Port- Supporting Hands, we always have this discussion and they also have a lot of reserve. So, we have the discussion every time. So, um, I think they gave a little bit back this year, um, to the counties, so they're, what they're putting in is a little less and they're gonna continue to do that. And then their big discussion is always the national family partnership vaccination policy, so. We have some nurses, I think three, that cannot make in-home visits because they're not vaccinated. And we haven't made exceptions, we just get into a lot of discussions and now in November, uh, the NFP is supposed to be addressing it again and hopefully, hopefully, there'll be decision raised, but the problem is, if these people quit, I don't know how we would replace the nurses. So that's the other discussion about it, because they're in the same position as everyone. Now, how do you replace the nurses, so? That's what I have, unless somebody has questions, I am gonna try to bring it up.
Um, I, I, just one more on the shelter. Did the shelter, didn't you report one time or am I imagining this or remembering it wrong? Um, on the land, there was a land sale over Candy Ojai County on the eastern side at Johnson Farm or whatever. Didn't the shelter gets some money from that?
They got, they get money all the time, um, because that shelter could not, it costs a lot of money, so, yes, and they also, yes. They got, is that the one in Ranville County they got, I believe, correct me, Corey if I'm wrong, they were involved in a state of a single person who gave twenty-five percent of it to the shelter and I think the rest to Cancer Society or something, doesn't matter. But I think we heard at the last meeting that the value of that is one point one million. So, um, the total estate.
Nice, yeah.
So, you know, it's gonna be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, however, there's some building additions and things that they wanna do, which were discussed at the last meeting and that's just been put on hold. We had a lengthy discussion about if that was a wise way to spend. People, you know, people who obviously give those kind of donations.
And maybe it was.
They love animals, but they get them all the time.
It could have been, it's over.
Yeah, they get them all the time. They got, um, the Meeker one got one, when I first started here from a, an estate for a couple hundred thousand dollars, um, to go for cats. But I think, uh, part of the discussion was, number one, it's not a good time to add on. And there are some things we had to have to add on for dog runs, for dogs and that they would like to put on a room where people can have parties because it helps raise money. But I, we, I think the discussion right now is if that's how they expect their money to be spent. Because, you know, I think they want the animals.
I just wanted to-
We also had a discussion about the budget meeting and the sl- sliding fee scale and how that was established. And why Candy pays less, the same discussion we have every year. Um, I will tell you that I think this is an option that is cheap for us if you look at the overall picture. So, we have sent out a letter to the counties, just like we did last year. And if you see somebody from Ranville or Yellow Medicine Commissioner, you might wanna tell them when you drop dogs off at the shelter, someone has to start paying for these things. And we send out letters to the counties and we get no response because this is an easy option, right? So, but, but it's a discussion that we have all the time. And we're losing some of the board. Corey's gonna be done this year. I'm gonna ask Julie to maybe take it next year if you don't mind, Julie, I want you to think about it.
You think about that?
Cause I'm not going to take it, I don't think. I've been doing it since I be- it's, it's a lot of work and I've got a lot of other things going on, not a lot of work.
Not selling it real well.
I've already, I've already kinda committed you, Julie.
Lot of fun involved.
There's also a lot of fun, that's right, I'm sorry. There's also, and I've told them-
Be a great used car salesman, wouldn't you?
Yeah, exactly.
I've told them-
It doesn't start, Paul.
Exactly.
Julie, I've told them you would be wonderful.
Ooh.
Because I think you would. I'm being sincere.
So then I have to take home a puppy or something?
If you wanna foster, they're always looking. So, anyway, that's that and i- it's a wonderful organization. They raise a lot of money and do a lot of good work and it's a good answer for us.
How, how did they? Because a- actually looking through the budget, I noticed we pay about eighty-six bucks per animal and Candy pays, Candy Ojai, which are the, were the two major contributors, only pays sixty-three.
Because I think, I think part of it is because they have a lot more animals, so they bring, adoption fees are how you make your money. And also, the property is in Candy, so it's less distance to bring, you know? And, and they'll go over and do some repairs for them if they need to, so that-
Because Painesville, I think, the city of Painesville, we have to pay seventy-five, so we're there, we're still more than Painesville also.
Because we're part, we're partners, I think that's why. And, and that was the explanation for Candy and they bring in a lot, Candy obviously has a lot more animals than we have, so they bring in, they bring in a lot more money, so. They talked at one time about putting a satellite shelter here. That was quite a few years ago, but that would be an expense we wouldn't want ever take on.
What, uh, you know, along with that letter, I mean, and don't take this the wrong way, but should we be sending an invoice to the counties? I mean, you know, I mean, uh, or-
We've talked about that.
Is it concerned that if you do that, then they won't bring the animals?
And, and here's the-
And then go and have the animals that fills some of your projects.
We, we've discussed that, but then when you start talking about getting a million dollar, two hundred, a quarter million dollar donation from that same county that maybe drops off some animals, then, you know, you, you look at the big picture, so you don't wanna be offensive, but, you know, certainly think it's all right to talk to the-
Maker County residents not to leave money in their estate to the animal shelter? I mean, I'm just-
But you know what I'm saying, Steve.
No, uh, but, um, at the same time, you know, people are gonna leave money.
And I'll just be real upfront, we used to, in the grand scheme of life-
You just heard that she didn't recommend you instead of Julie.
Julie has a heart for animals and if you don't have a heart for animals, you don't- I don't mean it that way, but-
Is this public?
In it that way, Commissioner, but I'm gonna guess you prob- I'm not gonna say it, but. We had a previous commissioner here who had his own way of dealing with animals when they, so. And, anyway, as I was saying, in the grams, grand scheme of things with these appropriations, and I've had a discussion and this is a discussion for another day. But I don't know how much time we should even be spending on these kind of appropriations when we're looking at a thirty-some million dollar budget. And you take time to meet and you want, this is, like I said, it's a discussion for another day. But, it's a good partnership and we're not gonna get it done any cheaper and we have, you know, they just come and drop dogs at the door, so what are you gonna do? Hundred degrees out and they drop a dog at the-
My son and his girlfriend just picked up, uh, I always gotta go the right way, it's a doodle.
Ah.
Golden doodle.
Golden doodle.
Not a liver doodle, a golden doodle the other day, she's a little-
They paid through the nose for that.
I, they got it from-
Oh, guarantee, yeah.
Two thousand.
He didn't, he didn't tell.
So we, we, we prefer you adopt instead of shop, but, so. Those are my reports and I apologize about woodland, I can't bring it up, so.
So Beth, I'd like to, to announce to you also that your sponsorship is Alex Tipka.
Oh, okay.
She is a, um, yeah, she golfs here for the, uh, school in Litchfield and went to state this year. And Andrew and I's whole goal for this tournament is to hit at least one ball farther than she does.
So, by the way, we've always, as commissioners, thrown in some money and had a team, whether we golfed or not, so I'm gonna sponsor, um, is it a hundred and twenty?
Alex, yeah.
And should I just give you the check?
Well, I'd like that, yeah.
You got a team? Do you have a team?
Yeah.
And so that's the foundation, um, how, and they're raising money for the trainer, I think, for the high school kids. So it's a fun event and the date is August.
Twelve, twelve.
Well, so I'll give you a check today.
Now I am gonna be around on that.
And they're always, they're always looking, they're always looking for donations if anybody's interested. All right, anything else from anyone?
There's no reason to, you know?
Oh, that's, it doesn't matter, but, as long as you get a team filled or something, that's good.
All right, any questions, anything else? If not, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Well, what about the, do you wanna talk about the Meeker Fair after? Okay.
Don't need to do it.
Right, move to adjourn.
Motion by Johnson, second by-
Second.
Chief of mine on-
Come to the fair.
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, this motion carries. Sat through this whole meeting without any coffee.
So what does Big John have in store for us?
So, um, we have two shifts for bingo. The first shift includes Beth and myself from five to seven thirty. The second shift is the two of you from-